Good evening, everyone. The Board of Education reconvened into open session at 5:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Isabella Carbio, student board member, present.
Rhodes Williams, present.
Cleveland Johnson, present.
Joanna Leyva, present.
Brandy Clark, present.
Sammy Luna, present.
Alejandro Rovacava, present.
Ms. Bronza Rasa, present.
Robert Verri, present.
Susanna Lopez, present.
The Board of Education met in closed session to discuss board deliberations regarding public employee discipline dismissal, release, non-re elects, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, conference with legal counsel, anticipating litigation, settlement of claims, and superintendent's evaluation. The Board gave further directions to district staff and took action on the following. A motion was made by Ms. Clark and seconded by Ms. Leyva and approved the denial of settlement claim number 102825. This was approved by the Board of Education by the following vote: four yes, zero no, and one absent. Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Carbio.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Carbio. Next, we have our land acknowledgement. The Moreno Valley Unified School District acknowledges that our schools and district sites are situated on the ancestral homelands and traditional territories of indigenous peoples, including the Cohuia, the Gabarilino Tangva, and the Luceno and Serrano. We honor their connection to this region and sincerely appreciate the opportunity to educate our students on their traditional homeland. Their continued presence, resilience, and vital contributions remind us of our responsibility to honor and care for this land and its people. Future board meeting dates, November 18th and December 9th. And next, we have the school report. Ms. Carbio, would you like to introduce?
Yes, I would like to call up Aubrey Gonzalez from Valley View High School.
Good evening, Board President Luna, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Rovacava, cabinet members, and fellow attendees. My name is Aubrey Gonzalez, and I am proud to serve as the ASB president at Valley View High School. I am here tonight to share with you some of the amazing things happening at Valley View. Valley View is a platinum PBIS school that works hard to ensure that we, as students, continue to soar by being sympathetic, organized, accountable, and respectful. This year, Valley View High School has implemented a new cellphone policy, making all classrooms cellphone-free zones. This change has significantly improved student participation and helped us stay more focused and engaged in class. We also opened our brand-new Eagle Cafe, where students can now enjoy a more organized lunch experience with shorter lines and brand-new salad bar that's been a big hit among students. Valley View continues to prepare students for career readiness, expanding our career technical education programs like the Light Health Academy and Auto Shop. We are moving from five to eight pathways, giving students more opportunities to explore their future. We kicked off the school year with a welcome-back pep rally, which included an introduction of our administration team and the many things our school has to offer. It was a great way to help students, especially the class of 2029, to feel more comfortable and excited about the school year. They showed amazing school spirit by joining in our ASB chants. Our fall sports pep rally was another huge success, filled with fun games and student participation from both athletes and the audience. Shortly after, ASB hosted our annual club rush, giving students the opportunity to get involved and join one of our 71 active clubs. As you see here, we have our amazing circle of friends with their peer leaders having a fun time playing with bubbles. One of our most heartwarming new events that we participated in was a sprinkle of kindness, where students wore yellow and stood along the sidewalk holding posters with encouraging messages. Random acts of kindness always makes a difference, and hearing cars honk as they drove by made everyone smile. We also celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with our Latin American Student Association, who hosted lunchtime activities such as the Latino handprints, playing Lotería, and serving agua fresca to those who participated. ASB also introduced student painting parking spots with 100 spots with white squares ready to be beautifully decorated. This is going to allow students to showcase their creativity and take pride in their campus. Our homecoming week was another highlight of the semester, with over 500 students attending the dance. We kicked off the celebration with a tailgate before the football game, where clubs fundraised and offered a variety of foods and activities. Our cheer and dance team delivered amazing performances, and ASIA Club took home first place in our full competition. We also crowned our homecoming royalty and ended the night with fireworks during halftime. And to top it off, our football team won against Hennepin High School. Even though it was a Thursday night, it was incredible, and it was a night full of pride, fun, and memories. As for our sports team, our Eagles have been doing an incredible job this season, continuing to show dedication, teamwork, and school pride on and off the field. Current league standings are: the football team is currently tied for first in league and remains undefeated through the first three league games. The boys' cross-country team is currently in first place, while the girls' cross-country team stands in third. Both teams will compete in their league finals at Silver Lake Sports Complex in Oracle on November 5th. The girls' tennis team finished first in league, and Valley View will also host the first round of individual league championship tournament on Monday. The girls' golf team finished the season in fourth place. Samantha Medina placed eighth overall and earned all league honors. Congratulations, Samantha. The girls' volleyball team finished second in league. They defeated Serge Storm in an intensive five-game match to advance in the second round of CIF playoffs at Barstow. The third round is scheduled for Wednesday, October 29th. Our girls' flag football team had an historic season, finishing second in league and qualifying for the playoffs for the first time. They played a hard-fought game against Azusa. Even though they took the loss, we're still incredibly proud of their season. The boys' water polo team wrapped up the league playing in third after a strong performance in the Carousel Tournament. They will now advance in the CIF playoffs, which will begin Thursday, October 30th. Our Eagles continue to persevere. Last school year, Valley View took over 1,143 AP exams, with 341 students passing 579 exams. That's a lot of college credits earned and tuition saved. We also have 40 students enrolled in middle college program, and not only will they graduate with a high school diploma, but also one to five associate degrees. Our dual-enrollment courses have also expanded, such as math for the liberal arts and English composition. Altogether from our courses, we have seven classes with 229 students enrolled and six more planned for next semester. This growth shows our students' commitment to critical thinking and academic excellence. An example of our amazing visual performing arts, we have our marching band, which competed on October 18th at RCC and took home the High Visual Award Tournament Champion and first place in Division 3A. Our College and Career Center led by Ms. Evans continues to provide countless opportunities for students to connect with colleges like CBU, University of Redlands, Cal State San Bernardino, UC Berkeley, UCR, and UC Santa Barbara. All of these colleges have personally come down to give us lots of important information about their schools. They also haven't just based it on colleges. They are always reminding us about scholarships. Military representatives are always visiting us during lunches, too. We even had a military truck stop by and show us some of the incredible things they have to offer with technology. Students also have attended Latino College Expo at the University of Laverne, where they explored new educational pathways. We also attended the Senior College and Career Fair, and it was a huge success. That's not all. We also had our students attend the UCAN Conference, where four Valley View students earned full rights scholarships to HBCUs. I can confidently say that everyone at Valley View High School takes great pride in being part of this community. We are Soaring Eagles, sympathetic, organized, accountable, and respectful, and we continue to shine in all that we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your presentation. You did a great job. You guys are doing great things over there at Valley View. Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you.
Any of my other colleagues want to say anything?
I would also like to congratulate you. You did a wonderful job. In fact, all of you guys at school did a wonderful job, and especially the principal that you guys work with. I'm an old military guy myself, and sometimes I pretend like I never was, but when I hear words that come out of your mouth about some of the things that happened back in the past, it makes me feel a little bit better than I did before. And the reason, let me please explain this. If y'all remember, several years ago, military people used to take their uniforms off. You know why? Because people outside of the military, you know, look down on you. Maybe, oh, maybe I shouldn't say that, because a lot of you guys probably weren't even born back then. But you were, you remember those days, yeah. Believe it or not, it wasn't like it is today. But thank you guys for what you did. Great job, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate you on a great presentation. I just had a question. There are 100 spots with a white square ready to be beautifully decorated through ASB to showcase the creativity and take pride in their campus. So was it a contest? Was it?
So we haven't decorated them yet, so students that have parking passes to park in the parking lot are able to buy a white square, and that parking spot is there, so they can decorate it however they want within that square.
Yeah, I just didn't know how, yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, great presentation. I know you guys worked very hard. And I also wanted to include how Valley View has had a lot of involvement in recent resolutions passed, and such as Suicide Awareness Week, Cancer Awareness, Athletic Directors Week, as well as Domestic Violence Awareness, by making posters and wearing ribbons to represent like the solidarity. And I just think that Aubrey, as ASB president, she's worked really hard with like having these events, and I think that's important to include as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. It was an excellent presentation. I love when students come, you know, and say what they're doing at their schools, because it helps us understand, you know, how proud of you of the sites that you attend. So thank you.
No, thank you. I'm proud to be at Valley View, so.
I'll make mine really quick and sweet. Go Eagles!
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we are on to superintendent's report. Dr. Rovacava?
Thank you, Board President Luna. So I'm happy to share some of the amazing things that are happening in the district since the last time we met, which was just a couple of weeks ago, but that tells you how much amazing stuff is happening, that we have a full report for tonight as well. So as always, we like to start with our vision, mission, and portrait of a graduate. And this time around, we have a student introducing us to that. So can we play the video, please?
Hello, I'm Keisha Neal. I'm in 12th grade, and I go to Moreno Valley High School. Our vision: to empower students to become future-ready and positively impact the world. Our mission: to provide an equitable education for all students to be prepared for college and/or a valuable career path for our successful life.
Hi, my name is Naomi, and I'm a student here at Sunny Meadows.
Hi, Naomi.
Hi, Victoria.
What are you doing?
I'm about to show that here at Sunny Meadows is a great school.
Can I join?
Of course. What's your favorite part about Sunny Meadows?
I love that Sunny Meadows teaches us and gets us prepared for middle school, high school, and even college. What's your favorite part?
My favorite portrait of a graduate is collaboration, working in small and little groups like right now. By working in small little groups, they can learn more from the teachers. What's your favorite portrait of a graduate?
Mine is communication. I like communication because it allows us to show our hard work and our science projects, even if we spent like hours on them. It's an amazing thing that we could collaborate with. Okay, guys, what are you guys doing? You're gonna be late for class. Oh, okay, thank you, Colin. Let's go.
I love Sunny Meadows.
Isn't that better than hearing it from me? Ow, ow! That stung. I heard it in stereo, in unison. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you. We are very, very happy, as always, to recognize the amazing things that are happening in our schools. This is brand-new. We didn't even have an opportunity to ask staff from both of our schools to be here today, but I know that Dr. Reed from Hidden Springs is here, so he can share the news back with his team, although I'm sure they already know it. But we are very happy to share that two of our schools were just recognized as honorable schools by ERP, which is the Educational Results Partnership for their work in sustaining academic improvement and achievement, especially for students in our district and our community. So the Honorable Program has recognized so far 1,834 schools across 158 districts for helping students of all backgrounds achieve at higher levels. And their methodology is to assess language arts and math scores across different grade year spans. So both Northridge and Hidden have seen significant growth over the last three years. So they are recognized this year as ERP Results Honorable Schools. So congratulations to them. So we will make sure that we invite your staff and the staff at Northridge to come and visit us at our next board meeting, and we're already looking at how we can put something on the marquee or add a different logo or emblem on the building, so we can recognize this greater accomplishment. Thank you to our team and our community, both at Hidden Springs and at Northridge, for all of their hard work. We also are very proud to recognize, again, one of our very own. We are very happy that Board President Ms. Sammy Luna was recognized by the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators as a recipient of the IMPACT Award, CALSA England Empire for 2025. A big round of applause. This award is given to trustees who are making a difference in their community and the broader community as a result of increasing student achievement, but also working to secure and make spaces safe and places of belonging for all students in our community. So we are so happy to recognize Board President Sammy Luna, and you can see all of the people who were there at the University of Laverne, who is now recognized as a Latino-serving university, for the recognition. So again, thank you and congratulations for all you do. We have some district highlights, but we're gonna start with our sense of belonging video. So let me go back, I think I went too far. There you go.
Hey, my name is Maria Flonoy. I'm in 12th grade here at Canyon Springs High School. I feel like joining different clubs and different approaches, like joining football, leading through ASB makes me feel like I'm part of my school. You know, I get to meet new people every single day of my life. All my friends, everybody at the school, honestly, like the principals, the teachers, they all are so like appreciating of students. I feel like just the school giving everybody so many opportunities to like really express themselves, I feel like it just makes me feel included, like different events going throughout the school, you know, being able to meet new people.
So it's always important to hear from our students and the fact that they feel like they truly belong, and our schools are a place for them. So we're gonna continue to bring testimonials of our students and how they share and how they feel about their schools and their teachers and the staff. So thank you to our students for continuing to contribute to that as well. And our continued effort to showcase schools, today we're gonna showcase two schools. I'm gonna start with Moreno Valley High School, and I'm gonna specifically speak to something unique to Moreno Valley High School, which is a culinary arts program. You can see that there are various programs that are offered there, but more and more, there's a recognition by our board and by our leadership team and our team in general that we have to prepare students not only for the demands of college, but also career. And what better way to get them started than by offering a program that is gonna truly equip them and prepare them for something that they can go straight into the workforce, and that's the culinary arts. And as evidenced by my family and my girls that are hooked on the food channel and all of the competition shows and everything that you can do in terms of being an entrepreneur, we know that this is a great opportunity and a viable pathway for our students to achieve future success. So for any of our families who are interested in something unique, please consider Moreno Valley High School and their culinary arts program. It's a great opportunity for your kiddos to receive that training and that skill set. Also gonna showcase Butterfield Language Academy this time around. As we all know, Butterfield is our dual-language academy focusing on the Spanish program. And one thing that is unique is we continue to also work on our schools in developing their sense of identity. And so every school is unique, and they all have a different feel and a different climate and a different culture. Butterfield is a very large K-8 school, and so they're trying to kind of brand themselves as a true academy. And one of the things that they did this year is they implemented a school uniform policy. It's not fully in effect yet, because we wanted families to get used to the new policy, but you can see that our students who are in the primary grades are wearing that bright, dare I say, Dodger blue, and then our middle school students are wearing the kind of darker blue, grayish, slate-almost color. But it's another way for our students to exhibit pride in their schools and in the programs that they're part of. We are continually impressed by the great accomplishments of our students at Butterfield Language Academy. And so for our community, if you're interested in a dual-language program that's in Spanish, we very much encourage you to consider Butterfield Language Academy. Also happy to share that we continue to grow our athletic programs, and on October 11th, we held our first elementary flag football contest. So there's a video after the second slide, but I wanna make sure that I recognize the teams. So many teams competed, but here are how the top three schools placed. Honey Hollow came in third place, so congratulations to them. Box Springs came in second place, so congratulations to them. I will also say that Box Springs is our smallest school with the lowest enrollment, so the fact that they put a team that was super competitive is a kudos to them. So congratulations to Box Springs. And in first place, a little bit of a drum roll, Sugar Hill. Congratulations to Sugar Hill. And because we wanna give our students an opportunity to really feel what it means to be in a competition sport, we have, and by we, I mean Mr. Sterns, who's back there, Nick, who's in charge of our athletic program, has arranged a competition against Valverde Unified School District. So on November 8th, our top three schools, Honey Hollow, Box Springs, and Sugar Hill, are gonna play against their top three schools. So we're very much looking forward to that. So thank you, Mr. Sterns, for arranging that and for collaborating with our neighbor district, and we hope that everyone will join us there. The calendar invites are already in your mailbox. So we hope that we will see you there. And I think there's a video after this one.
My name is Nick Sterns, and I'm the Director of Enrichment and Expanding Learning. We are at the first annual flag football tournament for Moreno Valley School District, and this is all of our elementary students participating. You know, the great thing with this is they have an opportunity to see amazing high school in our district, like Canyon Springs High School, and every student got their own high school T-shirt, too. It gets them excited about being a student here in Moreno Valley Unified School District.
It is so exciting to be here and watch all the students compete. They're excited to be here because this is probably some of their first time on a high school football campus. I wanna thank everyone who made this possible for them, all the staff members, all the coaches, and obviously the parents there. We couldn't do without the parents and the students who wanted to be involved. So glad to be here, and thank you, everyone, for putting this together.
So thank you again to our team who put that together, and thank you to our media team for putting on these amazing videos. We really appreciate it. On October 24th, we held the first of this year's Student Summit, and this is an opportunity to gather all of our junior students and really talk to them and have a conversation around what are the demands of high school, what are some things that we're doing well, what are some things that we can do better, what are some areas that we can continue to support them in? And this year, the theme was centered around how do we make good choices? How do we make and we break out of bad habits? And how do we set ourselves on a path to ensure future success? We had amazing speakers, we had an amazing opportunities for them to engage, and it was just all around a great opportunity for our kiddos to continue to think about future planning in terms of their careers and success. I wanna give a huge shout-out and thank you to Ms. Latosha Brown for putting on the event. She does a magnificent job, so if you can, please give her a big round of applause. And to our students, you know, we had a room packed full of students, and they were so attentive and so respectful and so honest with the feedback that they gave us about what are some things that we can do to improve their lives while with us, knowing that those improvements are not only gonna impact them, but the students that come after them. And they talked about that. They talked about the suggestions that they provide and the feedback that they provide are gonna help improve the lives of the students that are gonna come after them, and that was pretty powerful, so kudos to our kiddos for that. Our monthly attendance report, happy to share that district-wide, we're at just under 94%, and you can see that our elementary and our high school is just under that as well. Kudos again to our middle schools. For a middle school to be leading the pack in attendance is pretty incredible, but they're almost at 95%, so good job to them. Also, Rona, recognize our top school sites for the month: Northridge, Butterfield, and Danmark Middle School. Congratulations for being almost 96%, but over 95%. And I also wanna give an update on our continued efforts for modernization and the use of our bond facilities monies. So this time around, we're gonna focus on our secondary schools. At Badger Springs, we're working on the completion of a STEAM-focused classroom and lab area. So you can see the work that's happening there. They basically are tearing everything down and then gonna build it back up. You'll see in some of our middle schools what it's gonna look like eventually, but we're hoping for this to be completed in the fall of 2025. At Mountain View, we are working to do the same science lab and conversion of an industrial arts building into a STEAM-focused classroom. You can see that even some of the restroom areas are gonna be upgraded. And look at the tile work to the restroom on the right. I know that when I went to school, our restrooms did not look like that. So really creating inviting spaces for our students is important, because it increases that sense of belonging, and it just creates that increased improved sense of pride in their schools. At Palm Middle School, you can see they're going all the way down to the studs, and this again is going to be the conversion to a science lab. We're hoping that this is gonna be completed by July of 2027. And you can see at Vista Heights, this is what eventually those labs are gonna look like. You can see the modern spaces, open spaces, has access to anything that a science lab would need, including electricity, gas, and water for all the science activities that are gonna be engaged in. So we're hoping that Vista Heights is gonna be completed by summer of 2027. And then at Vista del Lago, the Health Academy Building is complete. We're finally there, we're opening it up, so kudos to the team for that. We were planning on a ribbon cutting, but we received an appeal from the team at Vista del Lago, the teachers, and they asked if we could postpone the ribbon cutting, because they want an opportunity for them to move in, for them to start having the students actually have some activities, so that when we do the official ribbon cutting, they want to invite us on tours of the facility, so we can see the students in action. So knowing that the board was gonna be in agreement with that, we said yes, absolutely. So we're looking at a ribbon cutting closer to probably January or February of next year. So once they're up and running, we'll do the official ribbon cutting, because the most important part is obviously that our students are using the facility, so we're very happy that we're gonna be doing that. And then we have a couple of save the dates. We have our trunk or treat tomorrow night. We hope that you will be there from 5:30 to 7:30. It's always a great event. And don't forget the flag football tournament against our neighbors to the north, no, to the south, on November 8th at Vista del Lago High School, starting at 9:00 a.m. And that's our update for this time around. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Rovacava. Always good news from you. I appreciate that. Nice to hear all the great things going on in our district. Next, we're on to item six, recognition, communication, and events. Six A is approval of resolution number 2025-26-31, National Homelessness Youth Awareness Month for November. Do I have a motion to approve?
I like them.
From Mr. Johnson, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Clark, seconds. Ms. Clay, please call for the vote.
Student board member Carbio?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. And trustee Leyva, I understand you're going to be presenting this?
Yes, President Luna. If Mr. Rafael Garcia, Director of Wellness, Mental Health and Community Outreach, comes to the front, Lizeth Nava, Coordinator of Wellness, Mental Health and Community Outreach, and Andrea and Andrea Chavez, Parent Engagement and Specialist of Wellness, Mental Health and Community Outreach, will come forward so they can accept this resolution, please. Approximately one in 30 young people ages 13 to 24 and one in 10 young adults ages 18 to 25 in the United States experience some form of homelessness over a year. U.S. public schools enroll more than 1 million children and youth experiencing homelessness each school year. And an estimated 1,785 students experienced homelessness within the Moreno Valley Unified School District in 2024. Students experiencing homelessness continue to face challenges due to high levels of school mobility, residential mobility, educational disruption, unmet basic needs, and homelessness-related trauma and stress. We assist children, youth, and families experiencing homelessness, including food, clothing, and transportation. We also aim to bring greater awareness of the challenges and needs experienced, experienced by children, youth, and families. In honor of that, we are pleased to recognize November as National Homelessness Youth Awareness Month.
Good evening, President Luna, Distinguished Board Members. Dr. Rubacava, Superintendent of Schools and District Leadership, as Director of the Health and Wellness Center, where we take this with full responsibility to make sure that the resources are available to the families that need them most. And to tell you more about that work that we're doing, I have Coordinator Lizette Nava and Parent Engagement Specialist Andrea Chavez.
Thank you for having us, Distinguished Board. Thank you for allowing us to accept this resolution, President Luna, Distinguished Board, Superintendent Dr. Rubacava, and our district leadership. My name is Lizette Nava. I am the Coordinator over our Health and Wellness Center, Health and Wellness Center Department. I have right by me our phenomenal Parent Engagement Specialist. She was going to introduce herself.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Chavez. Once again, thank you for having us. Thank you for the opportunity to accept this resolution this evening in recognition of National Youth Homeless Awareness Month. This resolution is more than a symbol. It is a powerful acknowledgement of the resilience, courage, and potential of young people who are facing some of the most challenging circumstances imaginable. In our district, we remain committed to creating safe, stable, and supportive pathways so that every student, regardless of housing status, has equitable access to education, essential resources, and a caring community.
By raising awareness, we shine a light on often unseen struggles, and we strengthen our collective resolve to ensure no student is left behind. Tonight, we are not only recognizing the issue, we are reaffirming our promise to stand with our youth, to remove barriers, and to be a source of hope and opportunity. Thank you all for this opportunity. At our Health and Wellness Center, we are actually seeing an influx, increased amount of parents that are needing support from us at this time. But we are blessed that we have a very caring and welcoming staff that are ready to serve our families. We're ready for them. So thank you for your leadership and continued support as we work together to empower all students to thrive.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you do. Next, we have approval of resolution number 2025-26-34, Veterans Day, November 11, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Mr. Johnson, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Williams, seconds. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Leyva.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye. Motion carries. And Trusty Johnson, I understand you're presenting. Don't forget to turn on your mic, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Sir, would you come up and bring your cadets with you, please? Yes, uh-huh. And just, yeah, all of you guys, don't, don't be bashful now. You guys are Marines, man. I'm Air Force. If anyone asked me, I would have been up like that. Okay, if you don't mind, do me a favor. Not you, but then, would y'all just face the audience, if y'all don't mind? Okay, does that read this? Okay, Veterans Day, November, Veterans Day, November 11, 2025. Major David Wright, Senior Marine Instructor, MCJ ROTC, and student cadets from Vista Del Lago High School will accept this resolution. Now, in 1918, I was born then, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month at Armistice, temporary cessation of hostility was declared between the Allied Nations and Germany in World War I. Now, in 1938, November 11th officially became known as Armistice Day to mark the end of World War I. The name later was changed to Veterans Day to accommodate for all of our veterans. Now, November 11th is a day to reflect upon the heroism of those who died in service to celebrate and honor Americans, veterans, for their sacrifice and commitment to our great nation. Now, as a board, we recognize and proclaim November 11th as Veterans Day. And we encourage everyone to honor the men and the women who have answered the call of service to protect this great nation. We also encourage all students, all schools, to undertake educational activities that commemorate the history and the contributions of our nations and our veterans. So at this time, I'd like to present this to you, and then if you have a few words, the audience would be glad to hear it. No matter.
I'm not much of a P.A. system kind of guy, so my students might be shocked to hear me. Good evening, Board President, Members of Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rubacala as distinguished guests. I am Major David Wright. I am the Senior Marine Instructor for the Vista Lago Marine Corps JRTC Program. On behalf of the Sergeant Major, the Principal, Mr. McCain, and the cadets, who I have today is our current Commander Officer Natasha Newbern, our Executive Officer Jason Bagby, and our Company Guard Sergeant Deluce. Thank you very much for accepting and presenting this resolution to us. Just real quick about the program Vista Lago. I am the last and only instructor surviving since established in 2018, 19. At that time, we were a put-together element for ROTC program back in 2018. We had 92 cadets. We had classrooms. We didn't have uniforms. But we are motivated cadets that are willing to make the challenge for ROTC to make themselves better American citizens, that were challenged academically, physically, mentally, and overall their character. Currently, we have 122 cadets. That's after seven years after COVID that were still ongoing and meeting the commitments and the numbers and requirements for ROTC in general. Last year, out of those 116 we have, we have 122. Fifty-eight of them, for scholarship-wise, were awarded almost $142,000 for scholarships for either locally or joining enlistment scholarships. Fifty other cadets were in student activities, clubs, and sports across the campus. We had a combined of 100, excuse me, 620 combined hours of community service, 14 public affair events. And lastly, we picked up our game for competition. We did over 15 competitions last year for ROTC, including Southern California. The biggest one that we were very successful is our physical fitness team, is called Raiders. Okay? Out of 27 schools in the region, we placed number two. Had an opportunity to go to Pennsylvania to compete. Our fundings were short from the government last spring. Worked with the campaign, we almost got there. Hopefully, we can get there this year. All the events that we competed in, we either take number one or place in top three. So it's a lot of hard work. We would not be that successful without the wave of support from my president, or my Principal, Mr. McCain. You really don't get this much from ROTC. It's a challenge, okay? Working with the staff and campus environment, but the wave of support, Mr. McCain made it possible. The staff of Vista Lago has been very supportive of the program for the last seven years. And lastly, the dedicated support of the cadets, their dedication to program. We're there an hour before school every day, practicing, getting ready. We're after school for another hour and a half every day, off the clock for, as a teacher, dedicating our time to make us a successful program. Once again, on behalf of Veterans Day, for all that came before us and served and currently serving, thank you for the resolution. We greatly appreciate it. As I go forward on November 11, or November 10th this year, the Marine Corps will celebrate its 250th birthday. So happy birthday to the Marine Corps. And once again, thank you, everyone, for supporting ROTC. It's a challenging world, challenging environment. We're glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Now, before you go see, I would like, the board and staff would like to shake your hands. Can you start over there and then shake the hands and come around?
Absolutely.
Please. Take, there you go. Just follow him.
Thank you so much. Onto item C, approval of resolution number 2025-26-35, Celebrate Ruby Bridges Walk to School, November 14, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Leyva. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Leyva.
Aye.
Ms. Clark.
Aye.
Ms. Luna.
Aye. Motion carries. And I understand, Ms. Carvalho, you're presenting?
Thank you. I would like to call up Rafael Garcia, Director of Wellness, Mental Health, and Community Outreach, Makisha Bush, Secretary of Wellness, Mental Health, and Community Outreach, and Ella Stokes, Parent Ambassador, and Dr. Nicole Moshiery, Principal of Chaparral Hills Elementary School, to accept this resolution. At the age of six, Ruby Bridges made history in 1960 by becoming the first African-American student to attend an all-white elementary school in the South, breaking racial barriers and serving as a beacon of courage and hope for future generations. The Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day encourages students and teachers and community members to reflect on the importance of equality in education, to stand against racism, and to honor the legacy of those who fought for civil rights. The Moreno Valley Unified School District shall officially recognize and celebrate Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day annually on November 14th in honor of Ruby Bridges' historic role in desegregating schools and her continued advocacy for equality in education. In addition, all schools within the Moreno Valley Unified School District will be encouraged to wear purple on the day of organized activities and events to educate students about the life and legacy of Ruby Bridges.
All right, who's going first? Who's going first? All right, good evening, Board President, Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rubacava, and distinguished guests. My name is Dr. Nicole Moshiery. I am the Principal of Chaparral Hills Elementary School, the proud principal of Chaparral Hills. And I want to thank you for the opportunity of accepting this resolution this evening. It was November 14, 1960, when a six-year-old girl, black girl, she became the first black child to attend an all-white elementary school in New Orleans. That was 65 years ago. And I am happy to still be honoring Ruby Bridges for her bravery in the face of great adversity. Chaparral Hills students, families, and community members will again host this annual Ruby Bridges Unity Walk, and that will be on November 14th. We hope that all Moreno Valley schools and, we hope that everyone, Moreno Valley schools, community, everyone, will join into this wonderful event. And I am again grateful for the honor of accepting the resolution.
Grand evening, Board President, Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rubacava, and distinguished guests. My name is Makisha Bush. I'm the Secretary for the Health and Wellness Center. Thank you for the opportunity to accept this resolution this evening. I want to sincerely thank you as we receive, as we receive the Celebrate Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day resolution. As a black woman and a mother of a black son in this school district, this moment holds deep meaning for me. Ruby's courage, just at the age of six years old, opened up doors for children like mine. And as for so many others in this district to walk proudly into schools where they belong. I see that courage and promise in my own son, who is honored as a 2024 Palm Springs Young Playwright Festival winner and an APAC Shine Award recipient, and is active in many, in several clubs, activities, and track team as well. His experiences have reminded me of the progress that we celebrate tonight and the work that is still lies ahead. Your decision to honor her legacy reminds our students that bravery, hope, and kindness can create lasting change. Thank you for your support and showing our young people that courage and progress, what they truly look like, as we honor the past and continue inspiring the next generation to keep moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Ella Stokes. I'm a proud parent ambassador for the last 12 years. And I've seen a lot of changes, but this particular one with Ruby, I was a Southern girl during this time. And I'm so proud that Moreno Valley High, I mean Moreno Valley Unified School District decides to honor her in such a way with the resolution. I'm proud to be a member and a parent in this community. Thank you.
Good evening again. And just a friendly challenge to all the principals in our district. I know that Dr. Moshiery has done an annual Walk with Ruby Bridges event at her school. And so this year, our AYAC, that's what we call our African-American Advisory Council, will be sending out a reminder to obtain all the activities that are going on district-wide so that we can increase opportunities for community members, students, and yourselves to participate. Thank you. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you all. We look forward to participating in that special event. Now, we're on to item F, comments, public comments on agenda items. Any person requesting to speak to any agenda item on the agenda may do so at this time or when the item is addressed by the Board of Education. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for three minutes on any agenda item. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on each agenda item to 21 minutes. Board by law, 9323B, Section 5. Per Board by law, 9323, twice the allotted time will be provided for a member of the public utilizing a translator. Ms. Claudia, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Okay, thank you. On item G, public comments on non-agenda, non-agenda items. The Board of Education encourages public comments. During this section, staff may briefly respond to statements or questions or may ask questions for clarification. The Board may refer to staff or other resources for factual information. Direct staff to report back. Direct staff to report back at a subsequent meeting and/or direct staff to place the topic on a future agenda. If someone wants to lodge a complaint against an employee, the appropriate form may be obtained at any school or community education center. Individual speakers shall be allowed to speak for a total of three minutes on non-agenda items regardless of the number of issues to be addressed by the individual. The Board of Education shall limit the total time for public input on non-agenda items to twenty-one minutes. Per Board by law ninety-three twenty-three, twice the allotted time will be provided for a member of the public utilizing a translator. With Board of Education consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The President may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional people speak only if they have something new to add. Board by law ninety-three twenty-three B through C, section five. Ms. Claudia, do we have any public speakers on non-agenda items?
No public speakers.
Thank you. Next, we are on to item H, Employee Association Reports. I have California School Employees Association. Do we have any representatives here this evening? Doesn't look like we do. So number two, Moreno Valley Educators Association. I see Mr. Chris Fadias in the audience.
There we go. All right, good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, District Leadership, and Community Members. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board Members for taking time to meet with us and speak with us. We appreciate y'all taking time out of your busy days to do so, so we thank you for that. When I spoke here two weeks ago, I said we all stood at an important moment, one that called for fairness, integrity, and collaboration. And I wish I could tell you that things have changed, but nothing has changed, and we're still asking for those for those items, fairness, integrity, and collaboration. In just a couple of days, our members will begin to feel the real impact of what has not happened at the bargaining table. As we enter additional sessions of negotiating, we know what is at stake. Without an agreement, our members will face up to a five-hundred-dollar increase to their health benefit costs, which will lead to a pay cut come Friday. As these costs will decrease our take-home pay at the end of this week and as well as add stress to our families. Meanwhile, our professionalism and dedication remains as we continue to give our all to serve our students. We want to remain very clear, the cost of not reaching an agreement will become very real to our members in just two days. But the memories of this will remain for much longer. Every delay, every excuse, every half-measure continues to chip away at the trust between our members who serve this community's children and the people who lead it, the District Cabinet and the School Board. Again, MVA wants to emphasize to the School Board and the District and the community that we expect the School Board and District to make the right choice and demonstrate that District's values aren't just empty words, but transparent in their decision-making. This School Board needs to do more than say that you value and appreciate our employees and our educators. The School Board needs to prove that you value us with your actions. The unaudited actuals painted a very clear picture of financial strength of this district and not a district in danger of a financial crisis or stress. In April of twenty-twenty-four, in this very room, the projected reserves for twenty-five-twenty-six was twenty-three million dollars. Currently in twenty-five-twenty-six, those reserves sit at a hundred and twenty million dollars. The real question is not whether the District can afford to do this, is whether the District will commit to choose to invest in our educators in a way that reflects our shared values. With an increase to the reserves of thirty-four and a half million over the past year, this is a matter of prioritizing the health and financial well-being of our employees while remaining competitive as we recruit and retain the best educators that our students in Moreno Valley deserve. Again, MVA remains ready to bargain in good faith. And again, MVA calls on the School Board to direct the District Team to approach these negotiations with an attitude focused on reaching an agreement. Again, MVA is emphasizing the need for the School Board and the District to make the right choice and invest in the people who take care of our students each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fadias. Next, on to item I, comments from Board Members. I'll start with you, Ms. Carvalho.
Um, I have no comments today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yes, I was happy to hear about the Junior Summit, Making Good Choices. And we're we're moving in the direction of mental health and and well-being. And I I really applaud that that outreach and to hear from our students.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, I I want to acknowledge and thank all of the principals and the assistant principals and staff for the wonderful job that you guys continually do for all of our students. I wish that there's some other recognition that we can give you to let you know how much we appreciate you. But, you know, we can only do so much, so that's why I'm taking the time right now to let everyone know. Even though we may not say something every time you guys meet with us, just know in our hearts, we love you and we appreciate everything that you do, because it's not easy. I I thought I wanted to be a teacher one day until I until I tried to taste it and I thought, mm, 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 I'd rather deal with adults. So my point in saying that, and I'm making a little joke out of it, but the point is, it takes a special type of person to be able to deal with students. Doesn't matter if they're in in high school, elementary, or whatever, even in college. You know, because those guys know everything. You you guys remember, don't you remember, when you knew more than your your instructor did? And then you were still hoping he'd give you an A or B. You remember that? If you know what I do, I did. You guys gonna act like you all all that? No. I I cheesed up to him. I wanted to make sure they give me the grade. I I want it. So but the point but the point is, just want to make sure I let you guys know, yeah, we give out awards, and it's just to a few. But just know, we love and admire all of you for the work that you do, day in and day out, for our children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Leyva?
I just want to say, you know, want to share that it has been amazing to be able to participate and go to different events and 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 support our kids in the different ways that we do. Just the summit, you know, to be and see and hear the students. What they think about us, you know, how we can do better as a district. That is important that we hear their voices. Also, you know, the sports programs that we have for middle schoolers. Listening to the parents saying how grateful they are, you know, that they see that support from the district so that their kids can participate in sports. Many of them would like their kids to participate, but, you know, in in sports. But just seeing the financial hardship that they might have, that, you know, kind of stops them. And now seeing that the District is working and offering that to their students, they're very grateful of that. And I wanted to share that with with everyone. Then being able to go to the football games and, you know, basketball games and volleyball games and see the kids, how excited, you know, they are, even if they lose sometimes, you know, they still, you know, like cheering each other, supporting each other. That's that's great. And, uh, well, I don't want to take a lot of time. I just I just feel grateful for that opportunity to be able to to see what the District is doing and to hear the input from from the parents and the students. I feel that that's important that as a board, we we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leyva. Ms. Clark?
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Luna. President Luna, so there's a couple of things. I just want to say thank you for sharing the information on the Superintendent Report, Dr. Rubacava, especially regarding the honorable students. And I wanted to give kudos to Dr. R. Say for that and her team, so thank you. I noticed that the ELOP, I mean, the ROTC team that was presenting here spoke about funds. And I don't know, I I just know where the money is buried, you know. I'm not sure if it's allocated, but if there's some way that we could support our students when those things happen, or if you're listening, principals, even if you just, you know, submit something to Dr. Rubacava or Dr. R. Say or whomever is in supportive or overseeing those funds to try to champion for your students, we may or we may not be able to do it. But I'd like to, I'd like for you to try versus hearing that you just couldn't, and I didn't even hear a word about it. So please, please, come to us, ask. Worst-case scenario, no, but I'll tell you one thing, we're very supportive of students of this district, and we're going to try really, really hard to make it a yes. I'm excited to attend the Ruby Bridges Walk. I also want to give a special shout-out to President Luna for the CASA Award, or CASA Award. You know, I think it's very, very important that students know that when they come to school, they feel safe and secure, and there's someone advocating for them. You know, I I see and hear a lot of stories, and some kids who aren't doing so well, all it takes is that one educator, that one person, it could be a teacher, a principal, a counselor, a CSO, a main, it doesn't matter. That one person believed in that one student, and that made a huge difference. So I just want to say thank you for being an advocate, and, you know, that means a lot. Also, I wanted to talk about some things that are happening in the world, and one of the things is on Monday or the first, you know, we're hearing that SNAP benefits are being cut. And I understand that that can impact California, or maybe it maybe it won't as hard be hit as hard, because there are some protocols. But I just want to let everyone know that in this district, we feed all our children for free. They will have a meal here. We are doing everything we can to to ensure that our babies are fed and well taken care of in this district. And I just want to say it, say it again, we can only help where we can help, but listen, meals count, and we're here. And so if it gets too bad, I know that this board is ready and willing to look at what we can do, even if it's on weekends. I didn't ask, I'm just saying, but we're we're, we don't know, but we're going to try. I'm putting it out there that we will champion for these babies, right? And I just want you to know that. We'll do everything that we can to help. Shout-out to a couple of our counselors or all of our counselors, but there was one counselor in particular I had the pleasure of seeing Friday night at a listening circle that I did, and, you know, it is, I spoke about this a little earlier, but it's a sight to see and so special when we connect with our baby. She spoke about a gentleman that was having a little bit of a hard time, and he had lost his spark to come to school. And just her having that conversation and even noticing him, the words that she said was, "It was a bonfire", after she starts speaking with him. So the spark turned into a bonfire, and he is ready and willing to come back to school and be engaged. And, you know, this work isn't easy, and I know you guys are human, all these educators in this room, but I just want you to know, too, Rose, sentiment, we see you, and we really, really appreciate you. Do I talk about the listening circle? Okay, yeah, okay. I just thought about it. So I had the opportunity to have a listening circle, and there was some common themes that some of the parents were wanting us to, or some of the community members and parents were wanting us to speak about. And that, and I know that we're all having one, and I think they might be a common theme, but attendance was one, chronic absenteeism, safety and security, and just overall mental health resources. So we hear you. I'm sharing that with the rest of the board. We're all going to come together and collaborate and ensure that we are meeting the needs of our community and, most importantly, our kiddos. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. So I just want to piggyback off what you were talking about regarding the SNAP benefits. That is very, it is very concerning, especially since there's so many unknowns. We don't know how long it'll go on for. And so I just kind of want to throw out there in addition to what you're saying, how we how we get support, maybe collaborate with the county, the city, to provide more resources. Also, make sure that our Wellness Center is promoted throughout the district, that all of our staff and our parents and our our students know about it, and just, you know, come together to be stronger, because, I mean, as much as we want to say we can do it, we might need county and city assistance, and they might need our assistance. So I think, you know, stronger together is better. I would also like, you know, I I know we don't have this information right now, but maybe find out how many of our students and families are on the CalFresh program to maybe even kind of follow and see how that impacts attendance and, you know, those trends always say something as as these types of things happen, so maybe just start following that. But anyway, that's something I think we all definitely have on our radar, and I'm sure you do too, so. I just wanted to bring up a few things that I've done since our our last meeting. I completed my five Masters in Governance courses with CSBA. That took five Saturdays in Torrance, all day, long drive, all day. It was nice, though. I feel more equipped to to serve, so I I appreciate that. Appreciate Ms. Claudia setting all those up and coordinating all that. Thank you so much. Also, attended the Fall Joint Event in San Bernardino hosted by San Bernardino County School Board Association and Riverside County School Board Association with Dr. Rubacava. There is a great panel there. Also, I want to also recognize the team that was able to make it to the award event where I received an award. Thank you to all of you who were able to make it, and I really appreciate your support. I just, you know, I think I've I I said from the beginning, and Mr. Johnson, Ms. Brandy can attest to this because they were on the board that appointed me to this seat. I just want to serve my community, and I had no idea being in this role would have such a huge impact. It's a very, very important role, and I don't take it lightly, and I want to do it to the best of my ability. So I I appreciate being recognized for it, but I don't do it to be recognized. I do it because it it's very meaningful, and I want to live in a community where everybody thrives. Also, I attended the Student Summit, wasn't able to stay, but I I want to give kudos to the team for that. That's such a great event, so important to our students. It's empowering them, giving them a voice, and so thank you to everyone who did that. Also, this past Saturday, the Board spent all day Saturday together doing a Board Self-Evaluation Workshop, which was, I think, very good for all of us. Not only are we evaluating our superintendent yearly, but we're evaluating ourselves and how we're doing. We're holding ourselves accountable, and I think that's also very important. So thank you to my colleagues all for being there, and we did also take ethics training, which is required, so we had no choice in that, but. And also, oh, yesterday, I had the honor of touring the Moreno Valley College iMake Innovation Center. And if you haven't been, I highly recommend you go. I've had other people tell me that. I'm like, okay, yeah, sure. But then, once you're there, it's amazing, and it's open not only to MVC students, but all students, all the community in Moreno Valley. Anybody can go. So if you haven't been, please go. It's an amazing experience. I I will highly recommend my colleagues. If you haven't been, please go, because it's a game changer. It's a game changer, even for yourself. Like, you can make things yourself for free. Oh, and one final thing I'm very passionate about. Everybody, please make sure you vote. Please vote. You should have received your ballot already. You have limited time. I believe, what, November fourth is the last day. Obviously, I would never tell you how to vote, but I'll tell you how I voted. I voted yes on Prop fifty, so whatever your belief is, just vote. It's it's your voice, so that's all I have. Dr. Rubacava?
Thank you, President Luna. I have a couple of items that I want to share an update on, and then just one observation. So the SNAP, the possible discontinuance of the SNAP program is a concern for us. We know that there are twenty-four states that have joined together to file a lawsuit against the Trump administration to stop and overturn the ending of that program, especially since- to stop and overturn the ending of that program, especially since the argument is null and void. The money is there. This is not an issue of appropriations. The money has already been set aside and allocated specifically for this program. So, we're hoping that there's going to be either an injunction or a complete reversal or a change of mind that those funds are not going to be kept and they're going to be actually released. But in case they are not, we've, I've already started conversations with Mr. Garcia and we're looking at a couple of different options, just for our community and for the board's sense of, of security. If our current pattern of need continues, we're completely okay until the end of the school year, which is good. The challenge is, we don't know what the need's going to be after November, after the 31st, starting November 1st. So, in case that need increases, we are looking at asking for additional funding. We have some funding that we can allocate to get additional resources and support for our families. We're looking at partnering with our school sites as they do fundraisers. Maybe they can allocate some of the goods that they receive to the Wellness Center so we can, we can send those out to our families centrally. We are also looking at reaching out to our contractors and our vendors and saying, hey, you know, we have these contracts with you, now's the time to give back. And here's how you can give back. So, there is definitely a plan in place in case the, the unfortunate happens. So, I just wanted to ease everyone's mind on that. The second piece is just an observation. You know, we've been into the meeting an hour and 15 minutes. And I am proud to say that although our charge is to prepare kids for college and career, we've spent an hour and 15 minutes speaking on the social, emotional needs of kids, the affective needs of kids, the Maslow's triangle and starting with basic needs first. And that's because there's a recognition from this board that we need to have that in place before our students can achieve, period. Before they even feel like they have an opportunity to learn. They need to feel like they belong and they need to feel like we love them. And to that end, I want to speak to that thorough line being part of the board's study session on Saturday as well. You know, the board engaged in some very difficult conversations around how we govern and how we interact with the community, how we agree and how we disagree. But through all of that, the basis and the root of every one of those items was doing what's best for kids. So, I want to thank the board for being vulnerable, thank the board for engaging, but also thank the board for allowing me to be part of this amazing board and this amazing community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And likewise, back at you. Thank you for leading this district the way that you do. Your leadership is definitely something that we celebrate and acknowledge, especially with seeing how other districts interact. So, thank you very much for all you do, Dr. Rubikaba, does not go unnoticed. Next, we have Item K, Presentations to the Board. K1 is Multi-Tiered System of Supports: Academic Suspension, Chronic Absenteeism. Dr. Arce.
Thank you very much, President Luna. Good evening again to our, to our distinguished board and of course, to our community and our superintendent. Thank you for leading us today. As we have done in every board meeting, we are bringing to you a, a group of, of schools. And the focus is going to be chronic absenteeism, suspension and math, but in particular, suspension. And so, at this time, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Reed, Principal at Hidden Springs, Ms. Jackson Williams, Principal at La Jolla, Dr. Ochoa, Principal at Ramona, Mr. Palomino, Principal at Sunny Meadows, and Ms. Chisell, Principal at Mountain View. So, come on up. As just a reminder, everything that we do, we strive to connect it to our vision, mission, portrait of a graduate. And our presentations are not an exception. We, we continue to, to look at our data and determine how are we impacting student achievement. And so, that's through our vision, our mission, portrait of a graduate and our five goals. Particularly tonight, we're looking at goal number one and number four, academic achievement. But especially, how are we making our environments welcoming and safe for members of our community? We go through the CER, Claim Evidence and Reasoning, and then Actions and Next Steps. So, to start us off, and I think it was mentioned last time, and we do appreciate your words. As our principals are sharing their data, they're, the idea is that they're owning their data, but they're also letting you know, what are they going to do about the areas that need to grow? With that, we heard our board engage in the board's study session. And the schools that you have in front of you today had something in common. We're going to go over that in the data. So, you, and you want, you were curious, remember the five C, the fifth C? You were curious about their data in some particular area of growth and needed to improve. And in conjunction with that, we also are looking at, what are they doing well? And how can we take and leverage some of the strategies of the areas that they're improving and then apply it in the areas that they need to grow in? So, with that, the claim for the five schools is, overall, MVUSD has improved in suspension rates on the state dashboard. However, continued focus is needed at several schools to support specific student groups, particularly our African-American students, to sustain growth as preliminary dashboard results show progress in other indicators. So, we're going to make that connection in a bit. And so, just focusing on the evidence, we have provided the Board of Education our preliminary math scores. So, the way that this is connected is, even though we're focusing on suspension, you're going to hear from one of our schools, for example, that their math scores have improved. So, what did they do there? What are the strategies that they're implementing? And how can they apply that in the areas that they need to grow in? We highlighted the schools that we're going to be focusing on as we look at chronic absenteeism. Some schools have made some significant gains in decreasing chronic absenteeism. How can we apply those strategies on, on the area of suspension? And how do we use, or how do we look at student service to support those efforts? And then, we look at suspension rates. So, this is the area that all of our schools, or most of our schools have in common that are presenting to you today on how their suspension rate might have either increased overall, or even though they decreased, they showed an increase with a particular student group. In this case, our African-American students. So, specifically looking as well as suspension rates, not only at the elementary level, but also at the middle school level. And so, with that, we have the, the areas to grow. We look at Hidden Springs, La Jolla, Ramona, Sunny Meadows and Mountain View. You could see there in the first, in the second column, the suspension of our African-American students did increase. And those are the percentage increase for each one of those student groups. But in the last column, we also looked at, well, there are certain student groups that, that showed improvement. And so, trying to figure out, and that's what the schools are going to present to you, what did we do for those particular student groups and how we can apply it in the indicator of suspension? So, in the areas of glow, we're looking at suspension for Hidden Springs. We're looking at suspension for two or more races at La Jolla. We are looking at the improvement of chronic absenteeism at Ramona, the improvement of chronic absenteeism at Sunny Meadows, and the improvement of Mountain View in math scores. So, that's how it's, it's all connected. So, I just want you to pause and look at the data. And again, if you have any questions, our schools are, are going to be here to answer any of those questions. So, moving on, reasoning. And so, at this time, we wanted to start by looking at the possible reasons in the areas that need to grow in those areas that we highlighted, which is common for all of our five schools. So, we're going to go ahead and, and start with Hidden Springs. We do ask our principals to just focus on what the reason they believe, based on data and based on conversation at their schools, that contributed to the areas that they need to improve on. And then, we're going to focus on what are they going to do later in this presentation. So, Dr. Reed.
Good evening. So, I am Dr. Reed. I've wanted to say thank you for having us here. I'm a proud new principal of Hidden Springs. Looking at our glow, our grow indicators, what I could see through our data was looking at students that had minor infractions that might lead up to suspension later on. Those issues weren't provided necessary tiered supports to make sure that we're talking and communicating with those students before they got to a point of suspension. Also, that PBIS, Pieces and Restorative Practices, were not applied with fidelity across each classroom. And that point was something we need to work on as a site, which we'll talk about, to really see that growth rather than an area that we want to say that is significantly decreasing for our students.
Good evening, Board. And so, I am the proud principal of La Jolla Elementary School, Kim Jackson Williams. And tonight, I wanted to talk about our grows for La Jolla. Unfortunately, our students, we have a lack of stability and inconsistency within our systems at La Jolla, being the fact that I am the third principal there in three years. And so, that is something that we are working on. Also, there is a focused approach to effectively addressing student behavior. Unfortunately, for some of our, our student groups, it is working, but for some of our student groups, it is not. And with that being said, when we're focused on that, we're talking about our mentoring program. And so, we had a mentoring program that was at our site for two years. My goal last year was to come in and to just see the systems that were in place and not make a whole bunch of changes unless it was something imminent. And so, I did look at that mentoring program, address some concerns that I had with it, and then I pivoted with it. And we will discuss that in a few minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Principal at Ramona Elementary. Dr. Joseph Ochoa, thank you for the board for letting me explain my grows for students of African-American descent. Tier one behavioral supports not being implemented with fidelity. That means PBIS expectations were not being re-taught to staff. I had some discussions with staff, key staff on campus that work with our students and utilizing our PBIS expectations and re-teaching them the lessons on the SPARC model. That's what we follow at Ramona. That's one of the key things that led to this. Limited access to early interventions like, such as tier two supports, like a consistent check-in, checkout program with restorative support, like other means of correction, would have supported this. And lacked opportunities for mentorship for students. Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished board, President Luna, Dr. Rubikaba, and distinguished guests. For our school here at Sunny Meadows Elementary School, we did start our African-American Scholars Club, but we do need to take it up a notch still and focus more, I believe, on SEL, what we were talking about tonight, and mental health. And really have them connect and have all our students really continue to connect to the school. That's going to be important too, as well as a follow-up to our tier two support systems as we align them with our PBIS. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Chisell. I'm the proud principal of Mountain View Middle School, where leadership grows and pride shows. We've been, our leadership team and PBIS team have been looking at our tier two and tier three supports and realizing that we cannot use the same supports for every student group. Different student groups have different needs. And so, instead of just providing a checkbox, we're really evaluating what we offer and making sure that we are meeting the needs of each group of students.
So, those were the reasons for the areas that need to improve. But they did, as I mentioned earlier, based on the data, they did show significant glows or growth in some areas. They, they improved. And so, at this time, we'd like them to share the reasons they believe that, or based on the data and based on the research that they've done, that grew in those particular areas for those particular student groups. And again, we'll start with Dr. Reed.
Again, looking at the data that supports our EL students reducing their suspension rate is, last year, our principal was able to provide specific instructional support for our EL students. And in those EL lessons, not only with their curriculum, but also worked with social, emotional learning and offered opportunities for their social, emotional support. And so, we saw a decrease in the suspension rates for those students because of those things.
For La Jolla Elementary School, our students who are identified as two or more ethnicities or races, for all of our student groups, we implemented our SDRC team in which they met monthly, went over the data. We looked at the names of the students and the information in regards to the students, the supports that were in place. And we worked on making sure that we had three, tier three supports that were strong enough to support all of our students. And that actually helped our, our students who are identified as two or more ethnicities. We also offered group and individual counseling with our amazing counselor, Ms. Munji, for those students who were needing tier three support. And then also got our tier three behavior specialist that supports our site, Mr. Tony Wilson.
Our areas of glow at Ramona Elementary with the, the decrease of chronic absenteeism related to proactive use of ISP, that's Independent Study Plan, the communication with families, with the support emphasis when we're talking with families. We talk about supporting them in a positive light. Targeted attendance intervention and tier supports. We have a weekly Terrier of the Week where students are shouted out by a teacher in the school on Friday over Zoom. Actually, Google meets now because that's what we use. And the kids get really excited. It spreads positive atmosphere. It leads to PBIS rewards also. There's points given for attendance and also for other activities around campus. Strengthen the family communication and school culture and the sense of belonging every single day when they walk through the front gates at our school site, actually the front NPR door. Everyone is greeted with a hello and a smile and they're welcome. And positive atmosphere around campus. Thank you.
All right, for Sunny Meadows, we decreased our chronic absenteeism by 9.6%. And some of the things that we did with that was student engagement, meeting with our students that are chronically absent, doing home visits. That was a big one. But really trying to connect and offer students more activities and supports, especially with our night events, our family nights. And that really supported us. And plus, excuse me, tightening up our ISP systems as well really, really helped us with that. Thank you.
And for Mountain View, we are thrilled to celebrate growth in the area of math. We attribute this to several factors. Our math PLC teams spent a lot of work looking at the standards, identifying the priority standards, and then also working in vertical teams to see where there are commonalities from sixth, seventh and eighth grade so that they can work as a vertical team and support learning throughout the student's time at middle school. We initiated an after-school tutoring program with specific supports for our English learner students and our special education students. And if you stop by our library any afternoon on Tuesdays or Thursdays, you will see that it is buzzing with students engaged in learning math and actually, any topic. It's open to all students, but we really attribute this to some of our growth in math. And our PD specialist and our math coach have also led data chats with students. They go into the classroom and they look at students' individual STAR results and they have them graph out goals. And they talk about the correlation between STAR and CASP testing. And so, students engage in goal-setting and recording their data for their progress in math.
So, to our board, as you hear some of these things that they're doing and you're, you know, you're going to have an opportunity to ask them any questions. In this next part is, we're going to go back to the areas that need to grow and they need to improve. So, they're going to share with you what are their actions, next steps. But if you heard something here that you would like to ask them on, are they going to apply that to the areas of suspension, especially for African-American students, you're absolutely welcome to make that connection. So, our actions and next step, I'm just going to start with a little bit of a broader view just to remind our board, our community, everyone, that every single school has the SAGO, the Super Advanced Graphic Organizers that include the smarter goals in there and the actions that they are taking to meet those smarter goals. In addition to, we are working with not only the Alliance Task Force, which you'll hear right now, but we have a guiding coalition. We are now in the year three of PLC, reigniting our PLC. We have our math PLNs. We're continuing with fifth, seventh and IM1 and II. We're adding third grade as well. The Dial Team, the District Instructional and Academic Leadership Team, rolling out Flex State Training to all of our teachers across the district. And then focusing on Building Thinking Classrooms, those three strategies, non-negotiable. We want to see those three strategies implemented across the entire district. And so, this is just kind of like a synopsis of when the professional development is taking place for those different areas. And then, I know this is a, a lot, but again, we can add more. I asked Mr. Peoples and his team to put together all the supports that they're doing under- under the areas of student behaviors, chronic absenteeism, suspension, anything in terms of how do we continue to support our schools. So this is not everything, but a lot of the very important actions that have already taken place. And like I mentioned before, we also have our Alliance Task Force, where we're asking the sub-task force to tell us, to give us guidance on what they feel they need in these different areas, whether it's equity and achievement, chronic absenteeism, effective strategies for students with disability, college and career readiness, and early literacy. And we can expand that more throughout the years or be more focused and intentional in the areas, depending on the different student groups. So in addition to the district support and focus, we're also asking our principals to take the data they had, analyze it, own it, and then what are we going to do about it? So at this time, we'd like you to hear from our principals, the actions and next steps on the areas that they need to improve. In this case, suspension rate for our African-American students and their plan, not all plans, but some of the points that they're going to implement for success, starting with Hidden Springs.
So really focusing in on our data, I got to look back over the last year and see what were the behavioral issues that happened with each individual student, why they had that, and where it was. The mass majority of issues that caused or led to suspension were usually outside or unstructured areas. And so this year, we've already implemented zones of play for students where we have specific zones and games. We're teaching students, they're supervised, we guide them through that practice. The best thing with those, we also teach them how to communicate within a game with each other. And when something goes wrong or out of the way, how do we respond to that? And so far, it's been very, very successful about reducing conflicts with students that had traditionally, based on data, come back and had an issue in the classroom, in the bathroom, after school, or something along that lines. So that's been a successful piece that we've implemented already. We are still looking for more mentors to help and support our African-American students. I have a group of 13 students that I mentor. A lot of them are on the list here as tier-two or tier-three, and we really work to support those students before they get to a point where they'd be suspended.
So we started this school year a PTA. When I asked the teachers who actually started the school, they couldn't recall how long it had been since they had a PTA. I really do believe that with the data that we have, our community, our demographics, it is so important to have our parents and our community involved. So that's why I started up the PTA. We actually started the actual organizational meeting. We have our Board now, and we are officially, excuse me, officially La Jolla Elementary School's PTA. We also have family nights now. The last year, they really wanted them back implemented into our school site. And so we started that last year, but we also are continuing it this year. We have one Thursday night. I'm inviting all of you at 4:30. We're excited about it. It's called Math or Treat. So we have a family night for math. We have, and we implemented it with a little bit of fall and Halloween fun. We have math night, steam night, and we also have our literacy night. Then we're going to have one every trimester. And we have about, I'd have to say, 21 parents on our PTA. And so we're really excited about that. And we also implemented our Thing Together, who are also going to support us with our family nights as well. The other piece to our growth and improvement that we are working on is implementing the PAC this year. We are making sure to have every month, we are looking at attendance behavior and academics, and we're going to have a fun activity. And I've made sure to place our PBIS staff over it to support us with that. And then also, we are implementing the Patriot Mentoring Program. I didn't go outside our site and hire someone. We actually have our own staff there that work with the students every day. And we have done something also with just our campus support aides and given them five names of students that they have to check in with every single day, just to say, how are you? And I'm here for you if you need anything. So those are the things La Jolla is doing. Thank you.
The next action steps for Ramona will be to reteach and model PBIS expectations, especially outside the classroom where we notice most of our events occurring for students. Identify African-American students with multiple referrals and make sure that we have assigned supports such as check-in, check-out, mentorship, and counseling. Enhance the African-American student sense of belonging. We have some cool clubs that we've started. We have Debate Club that we started with one of our former teachers that's retired that came, and she started that on Wednesdays, and it's going over very, very well. We have eGaming that's going to start up very soon. The Theater is also a club that does a wonderful performance every winter and every spring that the students really admire, and they do a really wonderful job at the school site. And Color Guard will be starting soon. We have a teacher that has a history with Color Guard. So what I do is I get to know what teachers are good at outside of the school site, and I talk with them, and I see what kind of clubs they could do for the students to help their sense of belonging with our school. Thank you.
All right, for Sunny Meadows, some of the things we're implementing is meeting with our students. Our PBS tier-two team, our tier-team will be meeting with them individually to see how other ways we could support them, continuing to go to families to meet with them, even at meeting the families at Thing Together time as well. The other thing we're looking at to do is to increase our focus on culture. Like I said earlier, this year, I want to really focus them on the SEL, the mental health, and their sense of belonging on our campus, to make sure they're connected and really get to know each of them so that we know exactly how we could support each student. Thank you.
And at Mountain View, we are continually working with our PBIS teams to improve our structures and supports at the tier-two and tier-three levels, but also looking at where we may need some more tier-one supports as well. We have recently started a staff mentoring program for students, and so we had our first training for volunteer mentors so that we can start implementing that very soon. And when I shared the data with our APAC in September, we presented it as like a problem of practice, like here's what we're seeing in our data. Help us with some ideas so that we can address this. And what came out of that was Wellness Wednesdays. And this just recently started this month. And so it's an invitation-only event for students who may be struggling, and they get invited to come to lunch in a teacher's classroom where they can build positive relationships with other students. And then they'll focus on a topic for the day like conflict resolution or something that the students may be needing. So that just started this past week.
Thank you very much to our principals. Thank you for presenting at this time. Does the Board have any questions?
Let's start with Student Board Member Carayo. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions at the moment.
Mr. Williams?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Palamino, I see in your glow increased sharing of attendance data with our families on a weekly basis. What, why was that a glow?
Because what this past year that we did is in my newsletter I send out every week, I share attendance data so that the teacher, parents could see where we're at and encouraging them to bring their student, especially with our theme that we have through the district, that every day counts and that we're here. Attendance does matter, so.
So did parents reach out to you individually after they saw that data?
I share it weekly. And when we meet with the families, I can go over that data with them, too, as well, especially home visits and stuff like that. Say, the attendance is an important piece. But before that, I wasn't sharing as much data as I should, especially with attendance. So that was a big difference, that it's the first thing on my newsletter under the Seahawk thing that says attendance data.
Because as we teach our students, we have to work with the families. And so it's good to hear that you increased that, and therefore, it became more important for the students, but also for the adults.
Yes, that's a key, I think, too. I believe that adults need to know where we're at with our data and honest with their data, and so that they could see how we could continue to improve.
Thank you. I have one other question. Our distinguished principal of Hidden Springs, could you come to the podium? You know what I'm going to ask you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
What makes you want a mentoring program?
I've had great experience with mentoring programs in the past within the district. And I've learned a lot from those programs, and I implement those strategies with my kids. But I also like the connections of multiple adults, so students are supposed to see the principal as a person they come talk to, but they have multiple adults on campus they feel comfortable having a conversation with.
Thank you. I just, you know, I couldn't resist.
I know.
I had an opportunity to work with this principal through our mentoring program, and I learned a lot from this gentleman. And I think we need to expand that because our African-American males don't see anybody that looks like them, see? And that's critical. That's one of the reasons we have some of the deficiencies with those young men. So I really want to see our district make an effort to put qualified adults in front of our males so they can grow and have an opportunity to question. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I copied his notes because I were only here to African-American students and suspensions. And I know I kind of like smiled a little bit, but I do want to, first of all, thank you guys for the work that you're doing. I know what I want to say. I'm trying to say it in a diplomatic way. Well, I'll just say it like this. I'm still looking for the day when we don't have to continue to do the same thing over and over and over again. I mentioned this a while back, but I don't even have kids in high school. I don't even have kids in college anymore. I don't even have kids in college. They're done. But I want to see the ones that we are teaching to do the same thing that mine did. And I want to hear those parents say the same thing you just heard me say. Mine are done. But thank you guys for what you do, and it's not the easiest thing. And so I'll say something to the parents. Do what I did. Stay on them. Don't allow them to tell you. If you guys tell the parents what you need and what is not happening, parents, let's do what they ask us to do. I'm going to brag. No, not only did my own kids graduate college, I'm going to date myself now, I shouldn't tell you all this, but my four grandkids already graduated college. Come on now. We got to keep this thing going. So thank you guys for what you do. But parents, there they are right there. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Ms. Leva?
Well, I was listening, you know, to, the one thing that captured my attention was the mentoring program. So I'm a very, you know, supportive person of that because we have a lot of, you know, like, single mothers or fathers. So we got, you know, grandparents. And like Mr. Williams was saying, you know, I'm a mother of four boys. And whether, you know, I'm trying to do, I always say, you know, financially, I'm doing both roles, but emotionally, I cannot do that, not because I can, but because, you know, I will never be able to be that, you know, a male role model that kids need. So that's why, to me, it's really important that we have, you know, a mentoring program so that kids can identify, you know, with other people. Because, you know, like my kid said, you're my mom. You will always say that, you know, that you love me. You will always say that I'm great and whatever, but that's because you're my mom. But when they hear it from other people, you know, they start believing it. And one more thing that I like is what you're doing at La Jolla, you know, asking CSAs to, you know, keep an eye on five kids. It is important. As a CSA, you have that, you know, contact with the students, and you see their behaviors, and you listen to them, you know, to their needs. And it is important that we involve more people, you know, to support our kiddos. So I want to say thank you for that. And also, you know, from Ramona, you were saying that you wanted to start a color guard. You started it already?
We're in the process of starting. We have a teacher that has a history with it at the high school, and she's new to us, and she's really excited to get it started. But we're trying to get some supplies, and she's reaching out to her people to start it soon.
I remember my kids were at Marina Elementary, and we used to have a color guard in a junior RTC program back in the days. And it really impacted a lot of kids, you know, not only with attendance, but especially with being more responsible, being more respectful, and, you know, that we're able to go to competitions, tap-out events, and all that kind of stuff. So I'm, you know, I want to say thank you for looking into that because it really helps. You know, like, my kids were able to participate in that. And they being in the special education program, and that kind of helped in assure, you know, like, how they feel about themselves. Because, you know, one of my kids is dyslexic, so he confuses his left from right. And I had that instructor who was really patient and was able to help him, you know. And until this day, he uses that technique that that instructor gave him to differentiate, you know, from left to right. So I want to say thank you for thinking, you know, and giving that support to our kids.
Thank you.
And then, I love from Mountain View, the wellness Wednesday to us, it's very important that our kids, you know, are mentally okay because they're not going to be able to, you know, do good in other areas if mentally they're not, you know, doing well. And that's a great idea that I feel that many other, you know, like committees, parent committees, maybe they can bring it up, you know, and tap that support, too. So I don't know. I just love every single idea, you know, from Sunny Meadows, from Mountain View, from La Jolla, from the different schools. Sorry if I missed one. But thank you for coming here and sharing, you know, what has, you know, worked, the plans that you have to, you know, improve the areas that you're like, kind of not doing that great. So thank you for coming and sharing with us.
Hi. I just want to say thank you for coming here. It takes a special kind of leader to come up here and be vulnerable with the data that you presented. I know it's not easy, but I appreciate your flexibility, your optimistic approach, and the mere fact that you want to see change. That means everything. Common things that I heard was, as my colleagues stated, mentorship. But one of the things that struck a chord was a change in leadership. We have to think about that, right? So I think as a district and as a Board, we should pay attention to that. Because I know we move people around, people get promotions, people retire as millionaires from this district, and, you know, my point is, we know that change happens. But maybe we can start critically thinking about what that impact does and how we can overcome that and not make it so hard. Because if I had three principals in three years, that might be a little tough, not just for African-American students, but kids in general. So let's think about that, right? So, you know, and try to see what we can do. One of the things I also heard was mentorship, mentorship, mentorship. I know that we are presented with a lot of companies and resources where people come, nonprofits, and they come here and they say, hey, we would like these mentorship programs. So it's not like there aren't any. So what I challenge us to do is really look at those programs when people come up here to present them. I had the opportunity to be in a meeting not too long ago with one. I'm not sure of the outcome of that. But we see what our kids need. And sometimes, it's not just at the site. It's not just the parents, as CJ said, because we need these things. We need the site leaders. We definitely need the parents, absolutely. But let's all chip in. And if that's at the district level to provide support, then that's what we need to do. So when those African-American males come up here and they present their data on their mentorship programs, let's take a look at those. Let's dive in. I see the contracts, right? I see that sometimes we're not so willing to pay for those kind of groups or support systems, but our data shows us that we need to. Okay? So let's be intentional, and let's be serious. So let's be, let's be intentional and let's be serious. The other thing I'll say is there's something going on, right? There's something, there's something that's happening. The data is the data. I don't understand why it's different with African-American kids because when I see a lower suspension group, there's something there. I say this to say, we know how to do it. We just need to do it. And I go back to that implicit bias thing. We all have it. Think about that. Make it it up. What is little Johnny doing different than little Timmy other than they're different races? So lean into it. Stop, breathe, focus. If you're willing to help little Johnny, because you know deep down he's a good kid, be willing to help little Timmy because you know deep down he's a good kid. All these kids can be successful. And we need to stop playing games. We need to come together and we need to change this data. So for all the things that you guys have said, all these great things that you guys plan on doing, because I hear you and they are great. They're different, but great. And you know your kids. So I have no doubt that you will be successful. And so I just can't wait. And so I look at your data again at the end of the year and see how successful you are because I believe in you. And I also want to say I thank you and I also want you to know I support you. So thanks.
Thank you. I'll be brief. All my colleagues covered everything that I wanted to say. Um, but thank you for being vulnerable. Thank you for sharing your data with us and, and for, you know, telling us you, you have room for improvement. We all do, right? Um, but one common theme is not all students have the same needs, right? And that's what I heard from all of you tonight. You all are implementing different things to meet your students, um, where they're at. And you're meeting them one-on-one, not just grouping them in one category because that's what matters. Everybody wants a sense of belonging and especially young people. So thank you for doing all the hard work. Thank you for leading your schools. And thank you for being a part of our district. We appreciate you and we look forward to seeing um, everything, all the great things that you do and continue doing the good work. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. R C. Thank you. Did you want to say anything, Dr. Vuvakaba?
No, I think you, everyone covered it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are on to item L, the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues have any items to pull? I think Mr. Williams, you have something? No, it's a contractual agreement, um, Mr. Williams. If I, if I might, if I, if I may assist you, it's contractual agreement A twenty-five dash twenty-six zero two-five-four. And it's a contractual agreement. Okay, so you, Mr. Williams, you're pulling A twenty-five dash twenty-six dash zero-two-five-four for a separate vote. All right. So I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Um, I would like to second. And that's one of those great mentoring programs we just spoke about. So, um, I second that.
Well, I need a first motion. So are you motioning?
I'd like to, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. I was looking at what the contract was. So, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda with the exception of A two-five-two-six-zero-two-five-four as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Leyva seconds. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Absent.
For this one, you do want to vote yes.
Yeah, you have that too.
Yes or no? Yes.
So this is all of the contracts, everything on consent, except for the contract that you pulled?
Okay, okay.
Mr. William, thank you. Mr. Johnson? Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. And now I will ask for a motion to approve A twenty-five dash twenty-six dash zero-two-five-four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve A dash two-five-two-six-zero-two-five-four as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Leyva. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Staying.
And if you can state the reason why, sir?
I have worked with this uh community organization.
In the past.
In the past.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries five and one abstention. All right. Thank you, everyone. Now we are on to M. Discussion informational items. M one, business services. M one A, first reading of deletion of board policy thirty-two hundred, income new administrative regulation thirty-three eleven point four, procurement of technological equipment and deletion of administrative regulation thirty-four oh one point one, classification of expenditures. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Luna. Uh, this evening we are presenting for a first reading a number of policies. So I will start with the first one. Um, it's board policy thirty-two hundred, which is entitled income. This is actually a board policy that is unique to our district and not really connected to any existing CSBA language. Um, and so as we were reviewing this one, uh, determined that it's better to delete this one um, because it is addressed through CSBA policy and other regulations such as thirty-one hundred dealing with budget, thirty-one-ten transfer funds, thirty-two-twenty lottery funds, as well as thirty-four hundred management of district assets and accounts. So we are recommending deletion of this specific board policy. Uh, the second one here is an administrative regulation uh, three-three-one-one point four, which is procurement of technological equipment. And this is a board, an administrative regulation, pardon me, that is brand new. And we are recommending that we add this administrative regulation as there is language that is specific uh to the procurement of technology equipment. And so it outlines the different procurement methods um for technology equipment. So any of the computers or software also goes into specifications of things such as the um request for proposals, RFPs and so forth. Uh, so we are recommending we add this and then also incorporating the public contract code that goes along with it. And then our third uh one for this evening is administrative regulation three-four-zero-one point one. This one is titled classification of expenditures. Uh, similar to the first one, this is a policy that is unique to our district, not really referenced in any CSBA policy. Um, this one, we are recommending that we go ahead and delete um, because again, we have other areas where it's covered, such as thirty-four hundred management of district assets and accounts, as well as thirty-three hundred expenditures and purchases. Um, all three of these have been sent to our bargaining partners uh for any feedback and will be presented at the November eighteenth board meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. No action on this, but does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I have a couple of statements. So on the regulation three-four-zero-one point one, one of the things it says is, uh, the board election expects an operating expense will be charged to the fiscal year in which they incurred. And I know we're deleting this, but I want to make sure that we, we do have that captured, those, that exact language. And this, we still get to do accruals and deferrals, correct? Okay.
Correct. And we are already required to do that. Um, and it is referenced elsewhere. So yes, that is correct.
And then the second one, this is just out of curiosity and please forgive me. Um, the, um, the, uh, what's it? It was, uh, new regulation three-three-one-one uh point four. In the new adoption of the, um, the AR, it says that we need to, I believe it's that published in the newspaper ten days before, at least twice, ten days before. And I thought about it. Do we have newspapers? I mean, I guess online, right? Press Enterprise is still online. Okay, I just, I, I really got stumped for a little while, so help me. Thank you. That's what I needed to know. We still publish.
We still do, and it's something that is in public contract code and our purchasing department and our facilities department especially are very in tune to this. This is something that is heavily audited.
Sure.
Um, and so we actually are required to advertise for every single item and we do um publish it. Typically, it's the Press Enterprise or any other um local newspaper, but it's still required.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay. So we will move on to N one A. Approval of the second reading and adoption of new administrative regulation thirty-three eleven point two, lease leaseback contracts, board policy thirty-three twelve contracts and board policy thirty-six hundred consultants. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Luna. On these, these are a group that is coming back for a second reading and approval. And just to summarize really quickly, um, the first one was the administrative regulation dealing with language on lease leaseback contracts, which is a brand-new administrative regulation and incorporates the new law from twenty-twenty. As you are aware, we present a number of lease leaseback contracts to the board, specifically dealing with our facility projects. And so we wanted to make sure that we had all the wording in alignment with that. Um, so that was brand-new. Um, on board policy, uh, three-three-one-two, this was um an existing board policy, but we had some language to update. Um, this has to do with the responsibility dealing with um ensuring that contracts conform to legal standards, including language on the bidding requirements as well as conflict of interest policies. Uh, specifically, there was language that was added to this board policy um to um make sure that we abide by the new um le- uh legislation revolving um our nutritional standards for our meals. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we incorporated that language. Um, it's actually education code that talks about those non-nutritious um foods. And so that board policy was updated to include that language as well. And then the last one had to do with thirty-six hundred. This was dealing with consultants. And this is to incorporate law from twenty-twenty and really what it is um is to ensure that we include language uh to be able to distinguish independent contractors versus employee um and aligning to federal law that exists, um, like Internal Revenue Service, for example, um, on differentiating between your employees and independent contractors. So that was new laws that were added. Uh, we have received no feedback on any of these policies. And so at this time, we are recommending that they are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Any questions, colleagues? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Absent. Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries five yes and one absent. Next, we are on to item B, approval of the career technical education facilities program, resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-six dash thirty-three. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, President Luna. This resolution is uh in regards to submitting an application for a number of CTE uh programs. Um, I will outline those before I do. Um, this is a joint effort with college and career readiness as well as facilities. Um, it is a requirement of submitting this application. And so at this time, uh, the district will be applying for six different projects. Um, the production and managerial arts at March Mountain High School, childhood development at March Mountain High School, barbering at March Mountain High School, pharmacy tech at March Mountain High School, residential and commercial construction at Vista de Lago High School, as well as public safety at Moreno Valley High School. Um, and so, um, they asked that the board be aware that these applications are being submitted and that we are in full support of this. So this evening we are asking for approval so that we can check that box on the application and hopefully soon get notified that we will receive some funding for these projects.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Any questions, colleagues? Sounds like a good thing to me. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-five dash two-two-six dash three-three, approval of the career techno- uh, technical education facilities program as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Do I have a second? Mr. Williams, seconds. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Absent. Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries five yes and one absent. All right. We are on to item two, human resources. Two A, approval of the second reading and adoption of board policy and administrative regulation, thirteen-twelve point three, uniform complaint procedures, deletion of administrative regulation forty-forty, employee use of technology and new exhibit forty-forty, employee use of technology. Dr. Verdi?
Thank you, President Luna. I'll take, uh, the first part of this, uh, that we're recommending tonight for approval to our board is the board policy thirteen-twelve point three along with its corresponding administrative regulation, which update our uniform complaint procedures and our board policy as it corresponds with all the recent updates to Title IX legislation. Beyond that, we have the deletion and the creation of exhibit forty-forty, which is an updated new employee use of technology, uh, which this particular regulation aligns with all current CSBA guidelines. So we're asking the board with this action to adopt the updated CSBA exhibit and delete our previous regulation.
Thank you, Dr. Verdi. Any questions, colleagues?
The only question that I have is on, on the new exhibit forty-forty E, it, it states that you're going to have all the employees sign. So after we, if, once we approve, then that's when you go back and have all the employees sign their agreement.
Acknowledgement. That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. That's the only question that I have, Ms. Luna.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Johnson, seconds. Ms. Claudia, please call for the vote.
Student Board Member Carvalho.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Leyva?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. We are on to acknowledgement items. Acknowledgement of the first quarterly report on Williams' uniform complaints. Dr. Vuvakaba?
Thank you, President Luna. I am happy to share that during the first quarter, we received zero complaints for textbooks and instructional materials, zero complaints for teacher vacancies or misassignments, and zero complaints regarding facilities conditions.
Thank you. That is good news. Next, we are on to item P, future agenda topics. Ms. Carvalho?
Uh, yes. Um, I wanted to speak about chronic absenteeism and um basically finding the root cause. Um, so we talked about it at the study session. By um figuring out the solutions, um, what ways can we um use like that feedback to improve um absences? Um, so one of them was, um, or I wanted to ask, how can we send out surveys to students that might be found absent for unknown reasons? As well as um like having, starting um teacher notes or interventions with students and kind of just finding like, why is it that they're there and what can we provide them? Um, what resources, like to their families, if it's transportation or just like basic needs? And then my second was um the introduction of um AI into schools. And um one of them was Notebook LM, which um I recently- And one of them was Notebook LM, which I recently had a teacher that introduced this. And it's, so, so a little bit of what it does. It's kind of like ChatGPT, but the teacher controls the use and limits what it provides. So it has a search bar and it only has teacher resources that only the teacher can put there. And it gets the, the questions you ask directly from those sources. So students get like direct answers from the teacher's sources. And it also provides flashcards and quizzes, which I think this is a great way to slowly introduce it, especially in the high school level. But I don't think that anything like this should be introduced into middle schools or elementary schools, since it can cause misuse and confusion for younger students. But I do think it's important for high schoolers and teenagers to be aware of how to use these things. And then lastly, I would like to find ways to spread awareness about the resources that our wellness center provides. I know that the new one just opened and I know it has a lot of resources. And I just want to make sure that every student knows and every family knows how to, how to gain access and spread awareness about this. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Trustee Carvalho. So I want to just share a couple of things with the last one on the wellness center resources. Absolutely. Mr. Garcia and his team are doing their darnedest to spread the word about the resources that are available. And I think it's starting to take hold. As I am there more often for meetings and other opportunities, I see a lot more people there, which is really good. But absolutely, I think your, your point is duly noted and we'll continue to do that work. On the AI piece, Notebook LM is something that we've introduced to our team. The, the, the one piece that we're working with and TIA, Technology Innovation and Assessment is whatever AI tool we implement, we want to make sure it's in a closed environment, right? So ChatGPT, a lot of people don't know, is wide open. Anything you put in goes out to the world. And, and that can be really troubling because you might be putting in some sensitive things that we need to be mindful of. So we're working on that implementation of a tool. For example, Gemini is something that our staff uses because it's a closed environment. It's part of the Google Suite, which is we already use. And we're trying to figure out how we do that with Notebook LM as well, so that everyone feels comfortable that whatever they put in is going to stay there. But we're definitely going to be looking at that tiered approach and implementation. And I just want to compliment you on what you shared about chronic absenteeism. What you spoke on is exactly the work. Like, we can't solve a problem unless we get to the root cause of what the issues are. Unfortunately, with something as complicated as chronic absenteeism, there are thirty-one thousand root causes because we have thirty-one thousand kiddos. So it's how do we sort those into commonalities so we can provide those resources as appropriate? But that's absolutely the work that our team is engaged in right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, any future agenda topics?
Yeah, I have a couple of things and it kind of piggybacks on what our board member, our student board member said. I'm noticing that our middle school attendance is getting close to ninety-five percent. And that's, that's a big change from the past. And I, I, I really, really would like to know what some of the strategies are and how we can take those strategies at that level and spread them across K-12. And my other future topic goes back to the CTEs and the EV program that you attended at March. I think those are programs that are going to benefit our students as they exit our district. And I'm really a big proponent on how do we integrate our students with what we're teaching them and have some work experience derived from those CTEs, from that EV program before, during, and after graduation? Because the real crux of what we're doing with the CTEs, what are the outcomes of these CTEs? And the outcomes are, do they get training and do, are they employed? See? And I think we're down a path here that's better than working at a warehouse. And I really want to push the part-time work and schooling that goes together before they graduate. So that goes on their transcript when they graduate as well, leading to employment. Those are the topics I want to talk about. Is training and employment of our young folk. Thank you.
So duly noted, I think what we'll do is, as we move forward when our middle schools present, maybe we can ask them, what are we doing? What are some strategies and supports that they believe are leading to the improved attendance, so that we can share those out? I know that at the leadership meeting, our principals talked about developing a repository of different strategies and supports that they've used that have proven to be effective. So we can add that to that tool. And then on the CTEs, I know that we were looking at doing a study session on specifically our CTEs. So we can look at that for a future topic. And I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So I think we can work on that as maybe a future topic or item for a study session.
Dr. Vukavala, what I want to add in and have everybody look up, look up cooperative education in America. And that'll tell you exactly what I'm trying to look at. Cooperative education at the collegiate level, there's probably fifty to seventy-five schools that incorporate that philosophy in their undergraduate programs. And one of the leaders in the program is Northeastern University in Boston. They have internships all over the world now from Boston, where people go out and work a fifth year, acquire skill sets, and then are hired by the companies that they work for before they get their diploma. So that's really what I'm trying to get us to look at. We, we take that step, we'll be miles ahead of everywhere in the district. Thank you. I'm sorry not to take time.
I, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to place students internationally, but we can do our best to place students so we can provide that work experience.
But we take in students internationally.
Absolutely. So we will look at that too as part of that session.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Johnson, any future agenda topics?
I have one, but I am not going to bring it up because I want to talk to the superintendent first.
Sounds good.
I say what's on my mind.
I'll reach out to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, so we can get together. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leyva, future agenda topics?
Well, you know, I had the same, you know, one as Mr. Williams, I guess we had talked about it with the superintendent that I wanted, you know, like those CTE programs to be presented. And also, you know, the kids to be part of it, you know, to know from them, you know, how effective they are, you know, how is helping them, you know, build their skills and all that. But also one, one thing that I would like to, it's, I know we have an aquatics program for middle schools. Do you know, well, do you think there's any way that we can have them present like at least a short thing, or what is it that they do, you know, and how they do it for middle schoolers?
Dr. RC, can we do a Friday memo update on the aquatics program? And then based on that, if the board wants to do a presentation, we can go from there? That sound good?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I think I see nodding heads.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Let me share the, the, the thing about being such an amazing team in Cabinet is we just keep asking you for more. I mean, when you do such a great job on deliverables, they just keep coming. This is no pressure and this is not immediately. This is just something to think about, okay? Just think about it. This is no pressure. So with everything that's going on in the Trump administration, I've been really thinking about erasure. One of the things that was a really hot topic was our ethnic studies program. The law, the Assembly Bill that passed that we must implement in California. And currently, this Board of Education has said, this is a great idea. We, of course, we're going to implement, but we're going to implement as an elective. That could or could not disappear. We don't know, right? But hopefully, it's still on the table. But one of the things I was thinking of is, is there a pathway that we can say, or give credit, and I talked to Dr. Vukavala about this, and then I let it go, and then I did some more research, and I let it go, and then I did some more research. So I was thinking, can we maybe implement this as a US history course? Right? And so I looked at some pros and cons and what that looked like and what it meant. And I just want to provide a few things, some pros, because there are cons as well. But a few of the pros is that it's, it's known to improve academic performance, increased engagement, boosting attendance, and enhance cultural competencies. And so I think our students would love to learn about ethnic studies. And I think it would be a great elective, but I think it would be really good to have it as a core requirement. Or, or, or part of, like you can choose, right? And maybe we haven't heard of this, but since we're so innovative here and since we're trailblazers and we're so amazing, let's think about it. No pressure. Dr. RC?
I, I wrote down no pressure, so just to be clear. That was the first thing I wrote down. So to be clear, I think the request is, can we look at ethnic studies either as a graduation requirement in and of itself or as one course that students can take to fulfill the history social science component of the graduation requirement? Okay, so can, with, with the board's agreement, can we look at, just allow us to do some research? Because we want to make sure that we're covering the bases and then we'll put something in the Friday update.
I just want to clarify that the board already took action. This is a core subject.
But elective, right?
No, it's part of the social studies. It is one of forty core subjects that every student will have to take ethnic studies before graduation.
Starting in twenty-seven, right?
Graduating class of thirty, thirty, yes. It will be implemented. So the only discussion was, was it going to be implemented in ninth grade or eleventh grade? The decision was made, sorry, eleventh grade? So that's going to be part of the core, coupled in with US history. So that is already, I'm reading the board policy right now.
I did not know that. Or, or either I, I am a woman of a certain age. But I will share that I did go back and look at some info and I, 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 I'm certain I saw it as an elective as well. So is there a second portion?
So we had to, I think what you're probably associating with, and I, and I want to say that we actually are one of the few districts that's offering it as a year-long course versus other districts as just a semester course. I think what you're associating is when we presented to the board, we had to reduce electives by ten. So we went from seventy to sixty to add those ten into the social studies. So our board policy is pretty, pretty good when it comes to ethnic studies as a, as a high school graduation.
First of all, thank you. And second of all, I realize the word no pressure is like an abracadabra because it is already implemented. So that is the new coined term for no pressure is abracadabra. Thank you, Dr. RC, and thank you, Dr. Vukavala.
So just one thing to make clear, because I, I think I saw it too. I don't think that our course offerings at the high schools reflect this just yet, right? Because obviously, we're still working with the current model. Because I think I saw the same thing you did. So maybe what we need to do is start advertising with the middle schools, because it's going to be the incoming class of twenty-six, twenty-seven.
That's a good idea.
That they need to be ready to make those choices.
Yes, and we have the task force, the ethnic studies task force. So we will be updating high school course offerings. Once, we were just waiting on the decision whether it was going to be ninth grade or eleventh grade. So the decision was made it was eleventh grade and that we brought counselors together. So now that it's going to be part of our co-course offerings, our students as, for, as of next year will have that in the high school course catalog.
Thank you. And so this is one thing off your plate. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually don't have anything tonight, so I'm happy to say that. Keep your plate clean from Sammy. Did you have anything else, Dr. Vukavala?
Are you kidding me? I have like seven things on our plate, so I don't have any additional items. Thank you, everyone.
All right, with no further business to come before the Board of Education, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-six PM. The Dodgers game.
Is that a record?
Yes.
Yeah, another record.